Kirsten Hill is an elected member of the Ohio Board of Education, representing District Two since January 2019. She is also a candidate for the Ohio Senate in District 13. Welcome. Jeremiah Sawyer was elected to the North Royalton, Ohio Board of Education in 2021. Following his election, Jeremiah founded the Ohio School Board Constitutional Coalition, OSBCC, to unite conservative local school board members against radical policies. Jeremiah's term will end in 2025. Jessica Franz was elected to Bethel, Ohio Local School Board in 2021. Upon becoming a newly elected school board member, she learned that the chair of the school board had announced a new policy around transgender identified students' bathroom use. The policy was adopted without discussion or vote. Mark Rito was elected to the Parma City School Board in 2021. His term expires December 31, 2025. Parma Schools recently entered into a contract with the Northeast Ohio Diversity Center. Whistleblowers have provided evidence that radical indoctrination is in the school system. Mark, welcome. Diana Fessler is an elected member of the Ohio Board of Education, representing District One since 2020. She was previously elected to serve in 1994 and again in 1998. She is eligible for reelection in 2024. Diana served as an elected member of the Ohio House of Representatives from 2001 until 2008. Welcome, Diana.
Thank you very much. I'm going to start right in, and some of this will be repeating from Jennifer. I have several comments saying, but consider it just a review in the class, okay? Quoting from James Lindsay, "Possibly the most important topic happening in education, at least if you care about the well-being, health, and safety of children and the future of the country, this country, is social-emotional learning," or SEL. Social-emotional learning is the "psychologizing" of schooling, and as one might expect, it comes in a variety of forms. The most contemporary and relevant form is the most Marxist form, because the Marxist educators have completely hijacked any legitimacy the program ever had and turned it into a Maoist nightmare to ruin the children so they can achieve their revolution." That's a quote from James Lindsay. CRT packed into SEL aims to raise consciousness and to create more critical race theorists, or social justice warriors, as Lisa Chaffee mentioned. Another word you'll commonly hear is "woke." Woke, critical race theory, race Marxism are interchangeable terms. Why do you need to know about woke ideology? You need to know what it is in order to recognize it. I hope to inspire you enough to learn more, and then to share with others and to act on what you learn. Much of the learning I have done lately is from James Lindsay, who has a website called newdiscourses.com. Now, talking a little bit about funding, just in a general sense, SEL is funded. And I made up this meme, SEL is a funded unmandate in Ohio. Meaning it's not, there is no state law and no federal law which require school districts, local school districts, to implement social-emotional learning. Local school district boards may think it is mandatory, and local superintendents may lead the board to believe this, and even have it included in their local district's strategic plans. It is not mandatory, it is optional. Additionally, they are called standards, which gives the impression of being something that is mandatory. Okay. The route at the state level which SEL took to get into schools in Ohio was the calling for social-emotional learning standards in the strategic plan. And I have a little graphic here. Some might have seen, but we don't need to necessarily hold it up. And specifically via the whole child framework. And on this framework circle is social-emotional learning. SEL is one of four equal learning domains. I guess so. These golden boxes over here. On equal footing with foundational knowledge and skills of literacy and numeracy, academic subjects like social studies, science, language, and another category on equal footing with leadership and reasoning skills. And the strategic plan process was brought in by former Superintendent Di Maria, and the Ohio Department of Education is organized around the structure of the strategic plan. The number one imperative of the strategic plan is equity. So connecting CRT into SEL. SEL, as you have already heard, is what I would call a Trojan horse for many things woke, coming into the K-12 schools in Ohio and across the country. You could also say it is like a hypodermic needle used to infect and inject children with the critical theories, or Marxist ideas. I would like to focus now on a paper published in Educational Psychologist in July 2019. And this is the paper that Jennifer described as the 2020 Castle Update. So this is the source. The title of that paper is "Transformative Social and Emotional Learning: SEL Toward SEL in Service of Educational Equity and Excellence," by Jaeger's Etelle. In their words, this paper connects how critical race theory is brought in through the nice sounding SEL. And I actually have a copy of it and have been studying it. SEL uses techniques to break the kids down psychologically, and then you use CRT or queer studies to literally reproduce the Maoist educational program, which was from the late '60s to the mid-'70s in China. SEL has evolved. It may have started out, not have started out as a Trojan horse. Originally, started out by school psychologists to do that individual intervention that Jennifer had mentioned. And essentially, that title, transformative SEL, that's in the title of this paper, aims to be relevant. So the core competencies, self-awareness, self-managed, social awareness, they want to translate that into culture, identity, agency, belonging, and engagement. And also in the executive summary of the paper, it says, "This article seeks to develop transformative social-emotional learning, a form of SEL intended to promote equity and excellence amongst children, young people, and adults." So that's already been mentioned. But those words, the words are so important. I had no idea, my first year on the board, all these words, it's parading before me. They all sounded nice, but I've wised up a bit. And even the word "culture," that's identity-based cultural Marxism. Agency, Marxists have an upside-down view of agency. You are only agentic if you are working within their theories, otherwise you have a false consciousness. Belonging means you are positively affirmed in your identity politics, which is woke Marxism. Engagement is only considered authentic when you are engaging through the lenses of theory. Diverse doesn't mean you look different. Diverse doesn't mean that you come from different homes. Diverse doesn't mean that you have different politics, for sure. What diverse means is that you're all critical theorists who come from different backgrounds, and you speak from your unique voice or identity group. It's about being a member of a group. Empathy is a real lever, and I know I've had a conversation with a local board member up in northwest Ohio about this empathy thing. They're going to tell the kids they don't care enough, and they don't care in the right ways, so they are therefore bad or stupid, morally complicit and evil. What it's going to do is induce vulnerability in the child, and then they're going to be told how they should think. Quoting from a February 1st article in the Epoch Times, "Only those who show," and this is in a column that they have on a regular basis talking about communism, "only those who show sympathy for the designated victims and disdain the oppressors are to be considered moral, while those who deviate from the narrative are accused of being racist, sexist, homophobic, and so on." In schools, they're telling, they'll have the current events, things going on, and they're telling the children what the correct social-emotional reaction should be to those current events, essentially grooming the children. James Lindsay does, has a three-series podcast calling Groomer Schools, 1, 2, and 3. I'd encourage you to look that up on newdiscourses.com. I have a lot of repeats of some of the things she was talking about, so I will just scoot on to the next thing. And essentially, critical race theory is doing one thing, and it really boils down to this. CRT does, they're in practice, so one of the sayings that, and I credit James Lindsay throughout, because I've been studying him heavily for the last several months, and he says, "Critical race theory is what critical race theory does." So it's about action. And in practice, their aim is to make more critical race theorists. They don't care about academics. They don't care. So, you know, they want to get rid of reporting and report cards and grading and that sort of thing. It's not about educating children, it's about using every possible institution, opportunity, and resource to grind kids into critical race consciousness. Now, race, you could substitute in there the other oppressed classes, not, you know, so race doesn't just mean race, as we traditionally think about it, but it kind of bundles LGBT, queer, fats, there's a whole litany of other topics and areas that, a lot of this has been trained on the college campuses for decades. Okay, yeah, a lot of repeat there. And I say basically, policymakers need to understand all this and need to get this stuff taken out of the schools. The funding, over the last two budget cycles in Ohio, has been $3 billion in this area, and it's not required by state or federal law. And that is, I'm pointing to all the money for the Wellness and Success Funds, that was a category that was in two cycles ago, and then they've continued that and added another category in the budget. The children aren't going to be prepared academically for anything, and they're going to become Marxist activists if they're exposed to this. And it's a cult, it's a religion, Marxism is a religion. One additional thought about Marxism being a religion, and he has a lengthy podcast describing it as a theology, and think about this. The First Amendment says that the state shall not, what do you call it? Establish. Establish, yeah, a religion. Well, they're essentially doing that in the schools, so. I guess my time's out. Is that what the zero is? Oh, I'm sorry about that. Way out. I do want to make one more mention, that's an important way that the stuff has come in. I do a whole hour's worth of presentation, so I'm sorry. But there's a guy named Henry Giroux, who was like an activist acolyte of another gentleman named Paulo Freire, who was a Brazilian Marxist, who was very influential in what happened in the education colleges in the United States. And Freire wrote a book called Pedagogy of the Oppressed. Giroux loved the themes of Freire, and he made it happen that critical pedagogists, or critical race theory teachers, were installed in 100 teacher colleges across the country in the '80s, '90s. Thank you.
Kirsten, thank you very much. Jeremiah.
Thank you, Kirsten. And she will help you in her spare time if you ever have any questions or need help. Like Jonathan, Jonathan, like Jonathan, I'm just a dad. And I heard Jonathan talk a couple months ago, and when he did that, Mark's going to probably say the same thing. I love that line, and I use it now myself, so thank you. And I'm going to, you steal your kiss one now also, keep it simple, schools. So thank you. I'm just a dad, and COVID opened my eyes up. I mean, I thought North, my city has good schools, and I thought they were the best schools. But when COVID hit, and it forced us all to look at ourselves, and look at our kids, and look at our school board, and look at what our superintendents were doing, I realized that it wasn't as good as I thought it was. I saw a lack of engagement from our leaders. I saw hundreds of parents going and talking in front of the school board, and nobody listening. And after I did that a couple times, and I heard so many smart professionals do it, I was amazed at the lack of interaction and the lack of listening. And I realized my efforts were not worth it to just go there and talk. I've got to replace the people making the decisions. So I decided to run for school board in North Royalton. Myself and Lisa Shuck, we ran together in North Royalton, we partnered up. We're backed by Ohio Value Voters and the Central Committee, which I got involved with also, with all the COVID going on. I see, I'm at zero, hopefully I'm not at zero. Now I lost my train of thought trying to be funny. So we ran for school board and got elected. And I got elected, and I said to myself, well, now what am I going to do? You know? So we still had months before we were sworn in, but I was like, I got to get moving on this, I got to make stuff happen. So I started thinking about it and bouncing ideas off of Diane and other people I met throughout the, in that group, that sphere. And I was like, I'm going to start a group to share best practices and ideas on how we can make an impact at the school the day we step into office, the day we're sworn in. Because I was kind of getting the slow walk, well, you'll get training in January or February, and then you can get on a committee next year. Well, I didn't do this to just take action in a year or two years, I wanted to take action day one. So I started getting names of people that won the election, people that were interested in running, conservative, like-valued people, through Diane and many other groups, so many people have referred people. And I started this group, and I was trying to think of a name, and I'm going, what's a good name? Well, it's really about the Constitution, so I wanted to form a constitutional coalition, because that's really, the Bill of Rights is why we're all here. And so that's kind of what, I gave it, so it's OSBCC, Ohio School Board Constitutional Coalition. And we've grown and grown and grown, and we've done some educational stuff, we've got over 100 people, including advisors, we've got lawyers on our group, we've got over 65 school board members, but we have a long way to go. But the purpose was to share best practices and how we can have a policy that we could implement, present to the board, present to the community, and vote on it. Not just go there and be quiet, basically, and you don't, you have no input until a year later, is kind of how, and we're all supposed to agree and hold hands and sing kumbaya. And, and so it was very interesting. So I started this group, but there's over 600 school districts and over 3,500 school board members, so we've just got a small piece of that. It starts local, and I encourage everybody in here and everybody online to get involved, like a lot of the presenters have said, run for school board, get in a grassroots group that's putting pressure on the school, put pressure on the superintendent to get these issues addressed, because we have to solve it locally. We have to be the people making the decisions for our children. Our school board had no kids in school. None of the school board members had a single kid in school. What vested interest did they have in what was going on, what's being taught to our kids? And they don't know the issues. I mean, every day I hear an issue from my kids that are in school. I've got four kids, one in med school, one in college, one in high school, and one in middle school, and I hear all kinds of things. But if all your kids are, they're adults contributing to society, how do you know what's really going on in your school? You're counting on somebody else to tell you. Well, usually the best people are the people that are right in there, in the schools, your kids. So it starts local. Before I go off to the next, I wanted to talk a little bit more about the group. So the group, what we're doing is sharing different ideas and bouncing ideas off of each other. We'll have an email chain about SEL, or the Pledge of Allegiance, or parents' rights and transparency. And we might get like 50 different replies with this group that's on this group email, and everybody's just saying, well, here's what's going on in Hilliard, here's what's going on in North Royalton, here's what's going on in Rocky River. People share their ideas, and then, we're still at the infancy stage, though, we're not close to being mature and close to having a structure. But it's still awesome to see all the knowledge sharing going on, and a lot of people are new, so they're like, okay, well, how do I get a policy to be even discussed at my school board meeting? So a couple that are really cool that are in the works right now, like the Pledge of Allegiance policy that Hilliard's working on, that's an awesome one. So it kind of got everybody talking about pledge allegiance policy. Well, what's ours? And I looked, because you don't, there's thousands of policies in your school board policy manual. Read them, though, and hold, like was said by one of the presenters, hold them accountable to them, and update them if they're not right. We've got a resolution in Brooklyn that's going to be voted on next month for parents' rights and transparency. And that came from our group, with a bunch of people meeting every week, talking about it, a lawyer helping us write it, and then once it's voted on, we're going to share it with the OSBCC group. But that's what we plan to do, is more and more of that, to share these policies, to get them out there, because that's what, that's the nitty-gritty that holds people accountable within the school system. And then you need the leaders to make them happen. Back to making a change, it starts local, but it's a lot bigger than local, which that opened my eyes up too, because it's not just, we have to take it over locally, but if our legislators aren't being held accountable with the primaries coming up, find out where those local, those local political groups are meeting, the grassroots groups, hold those primary candidates accountable to what you feel is important. Talk to them about SEL, talk to them about conscientious sex education, talk to them about these issues so you know that you're voting for the right one, and they know it's an important issue when they get down to Columbus. It's so important that they know that stuff, because they're the ones that can make bigger laws that maybe we can't change at the local level with our policies. So it's locally with policies, the legislature, and let's not forget about the governor, who controls all this stuff, he's in charge of all of it. Where's our governor at? We're a red state. It's unbelievable what happened with COVID and the lack of leadership there, and then when you drill out in the education, the governor is in charge of the education and the health department. Well, what have they done the last couple years? Absolutely nothing, except for destroy our children. I got involved and sat on some of the health board meetings, and I couldn't believe the stuff they're talking about. As they're making decisions to shut our schools down, the stuff they were talking about was appalling, and I wrote them emails, and I actually had their lawyer threaten me that I had to do all the questions through their lawyer, because they didn't like the questions I was asking. I couldn't believe it. My eyes were, I was like, wow, I thought life was good. Got a nice house, four kids, wife, good job, what's going on? So something that, I was going to talk about a couple other things, but this just came up yesterday. It rolled out this month through our lovely Health Department of Ohio and our Ohio Board of Education. They've got, if you haven't heard about it, write it down, an OES survey that they're sending out to all the schools. So now we've got the Health Department, the Psychiatry Department of Ohio, and the Department of Education sponsoring this survey going out to all the schools, 7th grade, focused on 7th grade but through 12th grade. And it's oes.ohio.gov. And I emailed our superintendent and our principal about it two weeks ago, when we announced that we were going to do a piece of it for our 7th graders. And I said, well, what's this? Why are we doing a survey to collect information on our kids, like a lot of speakers have talked about? And it had, the email also had SEL language and all the fun, warm, cozy stuff, that sounds great, but is very concerning when you dig into it. And if you go to that website, you can pull up a sample survey of the questions, and I just did a screenshot of a couple of them. And so here's the questions they could potentially be sending to your kids. Question 393, "During the past three months, how many people did you have sexual intercourse with?" I have had sexual intercourse, but not during the past three months. One person, two people, three people, four people, five people, and even six or more people. A 7th grader could be getting this question. This is our government sending this survey to our kids. I couldn't believe it. Here's another one that you might like. "Did you drink alcohol or use drugs before you had sexual intercourse the last time?" This is going to our kids. We'll do one more, how about? "The last time you had sexual intercourse, which one of the methods did you or your partner use to prevent pregnancy?" And they get into IUDs, all kinds of, yeah. Do you want another one? I couldn't believe it, so, but it goes back to my point of, it's local control, it's also our state legislators, who we have in there making laws to govern this stuff, and our governor. So these primaries that are coming up, make sure you know what's going on, voice your opinion to them, and know that we're holding them accountable, because this crap can't go on anymore. That's how I feel.
Jessica.
Thank you. Yeah, so I'm very thankful for OSBCC and the opportunity to be able to correspond with like-minded individuals and bounce things off. As a newly elected school board member, I have a lot of questions, and it's just great to be able to bring those questions there and get so much feedback, so thank you for that. So, like Kirsten, I don't want to rehash a lot of the points that have already been made today, I think some review would be good. So I will hit on some of that, and then go into my personal experience with what I'm facing at Bethel Local School District in Miami County. So in Ohio, cell-based learning, as my understanding, kind of rolled out initially under Kasich, and then Dewine kind of carried the torch with CRT. And now Ohio is one of the, you know, leading advocates for cell-based learning. We have 18 states across the United States that have developed K through 12 standards for cell. Ultimately, as many other speakers have already gone over, the goal is to expand the role of the school through government standards and initiatives. So instead of the school staying in its lane, as it should, with being narrowly focused on education, cell allows for it to, as Kirsten referred to it, as the Trojan horse for CRT, accurately, accurate description. It allows for it to now take that control away from the parent. It's no longer the job of the parent to look out for their students' mental and emotional health and well-being. That job is now your school district's role. So most parents don't understand what cell really is and how it is being used to manipulate their children. They market it in a really pretty package and put a bow on top and say it's going to help your kids do things like manage their emotions and make positive relationships. And if you didn't know any better, you would think, that sounds like a wonderful tool, until you understand what the sinister goal of cell really is. And that's really to develop students who cannot think for themselves. They're not allowed to ask questions. It trains them in a liberal ideology and worldview, and primarily, they want to take away the influence of the family. We need to work to expose cell, work together to expose cell for what it really is. Advocates of cell have adopted John Dewey's philosophy of education, which kind of links education with psychology. And it is concerning to think that the teachers in the state, in order to get their license, have to go through social-emotional training, where they are taught that they need to turn your kids into social justice warriors, social advocates, and they're taught that that is their role, to be political, to adopt a liberal ideology and worldview. And I know, Chris, you use some of those fancy terms, really transformative cell, redistribution of power, that's what they're taught to pass along to our students. I like to compare cell to a hydra, it's a mini-headed monster, and it really is our next fight in education. It includes concepts such as intersexuality, privilege, anti-racism, collectivism, instead of individualism, and many other progressive words. So cell is incredibly dangerous. It allows the government to It allows the government to decide what values your child is now going to have, not the parent, not the guardian. So who is helping the government decide what values your children should now adopt? Well, Jennifer highlighted a lot of these organizations. That doesn't even scratch the surface, but Planned Parenthood, of course, UNICEF, UN, Gates Foundation, and many more. And one of their goals that I really want to talk about today, because this is affecting me and my district, is to erase gender norms through comprehensive sex education and through social activism, particularly among the LGBT community and surrounding gay and transgender issues. So local control is being completely sidestepped, and decisions are not being made by parents. Parents aren't being asked for their input or involvement. Activist teachers and clubs, and yes, social, emotional counselors, are oftentimes promoting the idea that students were born in the wrong body, and they're affirming harmful and destructive thinking in our vulnerable youth. If a youth is struggling, for example, with gender dysphoria, they're being affirmed to change their gender, to alter themselves by taking sex-changing drugs. They're being affirmed in their mental illness instead of aligning their thinking with reality. And I find it interesting that this is really the only dysphoria that we would treat this way. For example, anorexia. We're not going to give a young woman who's struggling with anorexia, put her on a low-calorie diet at lunch and call her fatty every time she walks by to affirm her. A student with a trans disability, which means they think they have all kinds of things wrong with them, we're not going to pat them on the head and come up with some new diagnosis for them to keep them believing the delusion that they've got a disability of some kind developing. Another severe dysphoria, xenomelia, I don't know if I'm saying that correctly, I think, where people believe that their healthy limbs need to be amputated. We don't tell students that they actually do need to remove those healthy limbs because they'll lead a more productive and well-rounded life if they do so. But yet, with the child struggling with gender dysphoria, we will affirm that delusion and support them in that. And I'm seeing this in my school. Jennifer mentioned, again, social justice advocates. Some of these guys came out to our recent school board meeting, one being our social, emotional counselor, who chastised the parents who were there to speak out against the violation of privacy and who demanded to know what kind of safety measures were going to be in place for their kids by now allowing a biological male to use the female bathrooms at our school. We had another teacher, who is also the president of the GSA Club, Gay-Straight Alliance. Yes, we have one of those in our little red conservative school district. And she was there to speak on behalf and tell us how many transgender youth were there, and, which is also, I don't want to get in the weeds with this, but interesting, because the teachers' union had told all the teachers to stay out of it. And she didn't stay out of it, yet there was no retribution for her. This is the same teacher that puts up a bulletin board talking about insex and gay sex. So, big problems. So as a newly elected school board member at Bethel Local Schools, I'm dealing firsthand with the fallout from a directive that was issued without community and parental input. A trans-identifying student was allowed, per the directive of our superintendent and the complicity of the school board, to use the bathroom of the gender identity that they identify with instead of biological sex. So if we start allowing bathrooms to start being segregated by subjective feelings or beliefs, doesn't matter if they're sincerely held or not, instead of objective biological sex, we are giving increased opportunity for bad actors, be they transgender or not, to seek out potential victims among our students. In the same way, if we allow a tech-based, global curriculum full of CRT and cell-based learning to infiltrate our schools and redefine what makes a good citizen or a bad citizen, a bad citizen being defined as someone who may not believe they're inherently racist, who may not believe that sexual discrimination should be extended to gender identity, because that is a belief system, that is a feeling, that is not based on science. But if they don't go along with that, perhaps their social, emotional intelligence score will drop, and now they'll be disqualified from opportunities that other students might have. Perhaps they won't be able to get into the college of their choice or college at all. This is a complete assault of free speech and our free thinking. And I hope, by you all attending today, if you take anything away, you see just how dangerous this is and just how far they can take it. Oh, I need to wrap it up. We understand they want to destroy the nuclear family. This is what keeps Marxism from taking root. So some things that you can do, and a lot of this has already been covered, but demand that your parental rights and privacy protection for your students' and families' information. Look around, find out what is embedded on your kid's Chromebook. Make public records requests. And look for backdoors. And I'm not going to get into the weeds with this, but if anybody's curious, there's a concurrent resolution, HCR14, full of critical race theory language in there that they're trying to pass that would basically give the governor a state of emergency over childhood trauma, to declare an emergency. I think we all can still remember what happened the last time our governor declared a state of emergency in this state. So I'd like to conclude with the words of the Federalist writer Stella Morabito. Above all, we must have courage, the fundamental virtue required in our time. Courage to stand and speak the truth. Courage to withstand epithets. Courage to face the mob. Courage to shrug off the scorn of the elites. When enough of us overcome the fear that currently prevents so many from speaking out, the hold of critical race theory will begin to slip, and courage begets courage. It's easy to stop a lone dissenter. It's much harder to stop 10, 20, 100, 1,000, a million or more people who stand up together for the principles of America, and I would add of God himself. Truth and justice are on our side. If we muster the courage, we will win. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Mark, welcome.
Thanks. Well, I don't know how I'm going to fill 10 minutes. Everybody, you know, said everything that I planned on saying, and even when a reference to John Dewey gets used before you get the chance to do it, I really had a loss of what to say. So that one kind of blindsided me. I'm like, at least I got that left, but nope. So I'll start off. I got into this, none of this was on the radar in our school district at the time. Our issue was, you know, we ranked in the bottom third of the state out of 600 school districts, and they're trying to spend $300 billion, or $300 million to build new schools. So, you know, I got involved in trying to defeat that. After we successfully did it in November, they put it back on the ballot in May of '21. So I had gone to a local Republican club meeting to find out, what do I got to do? We can't keep doing this, we're going to bankrupt these people. Well, in there, I met a lady from the Ohio Republican Central Committee that said, run for school board in your local district. I'm like, okay, that's how I'll fix this. Well, once I started doing, once I did that, you know, we still had to deal with this campaign, and this kind of touches on whether or not, you know, will they come after you if you do something? My school district doxed me because I led the effort against it. They put my name and address and everything on social media. I have three kids that live at the house. I had to call the mayor to make sure that the police would patrol in case anybody came by, because they were very upset that this plan lost. It took three years for them to get it and put it on the ballot twice. They doxed me. So that's when I really decided, all right, it's on, I got to make sure that this doesn't happen again. So once I did, I started noticing that they started adding things on the school website. We have this new program called Embrace All. What is this? So I started looking into this. This is the Diversity Center of Northeast Ohio. This is LGBTQ stuff. And then we get, we're adopting SEL curriculum. Well, the state says we have to. Well, I know that's a lie, so, okay, well, I'm going to look into what all that is. And I kept coming back to us, you know, kept asking myself the same, this one same question, and I, this is what, you know, you should ask yourself, is what is the benign, innocent explanation for them doing this? And I could never answer that question. There was never a benign, innocent explanation for anything that they were doing. So I started reading more and more and more about it, and I think Diane put it on her website, a good place, because I like to read things over and over and over again to understand it, on sel, pioneerinstitute.org. They did a very good, I think it was published in 2019, overview of the complete history of SEL. And it's very, it's footnoted, it's linked, it's all that, so that you can, you can really spend some time and really understand exactly what it is. And once you spend the time, you'll find out, it is everything that everybody's been telling you. They're not lying, they're not blowing this out of proportion. This is what they say it is. So, and, you know, we talk about things like the CRT and the SEL, and you'll hear a lot of, we don't teach that. Well, a lot of times, they're right. They're not teaching it, they're practicing it. It's there. They're not overtly teaching it. There's no CRT 101, but they, these practices are in every aspect of your children's education. And, I mean, I'll give you a great example. We're doing curriculum approval for next year now, and we actually have a phys ed curriculum. And to me, I can't understand why we're paying a company for gym class. Why, I mean, it's gym class. So I'm reading over this, and I notice they have all these new SEL lessons in gym class. So I go to the 3 to 6th grade, and I'm looking at what the SEL things are, and they have a game where they play with the kids. It's called, and I wish I had my laptop with me. I like people with... dot, dot, dot. And they line kids up on cones, and you're supposed to call out a trait that you like other people to have. And then the kids move to that, and anyone that doesn't get, and they keep going around and around until everybody gets picked. And I'm sitting there thinking, again, what is the benign, innocent explanation for this? And the only thing that I can come up with is, back to the data, well, if, I noticed that Jeremiah never picks a trait that a minority has, well, there's something wrong with Jeremiah, because he doesn't like any of the traits of a minority, so we need extra intervention with Jeremiah. And it's things like this that are in 3rd grade gym class that makes, it's really, yeah, yeah, grooming, in more way than one. And being in a, you know, you said run for school board and all that, and a lot of you will end up, if you do and you win, you'll end up in the same position as me, as I'm one of five. There's, so I can't get anything done. They entertain my ideas, and nothing ever happens of it. And I get really upset every day as I, you know, we go through these things, because Ohio has a larger Republican majority in both houses of our state legislature than California does of Democrats, yet we can't get anything passed. None of this should even be in our schools. If we just, if we, because you're not, at least for my, is you're not going to get it out of the schools just by taking over the school boards. It is so embedded in the curriculum that it's hard to get out. Now, the good thing is, I've, you know, I've talked to teachers anonymously, and there's a lot of them that I know that they had asked her about. A lot of them, they don't like this. They don't want to do it, but they're scared. They're either scared because they're close to retirement, they don't want to lose their, you know, they want to get their last steps, they just want to make it through so they could get their retirement, or they're newly hired. And you start speaking out, you're going to be the first one when they say, hey, you know what, we have too many math teachers, so you're going to be gone. So, you know, in some way, you feel bad for them, and then in another way, you think to yourself, well, you guys will strike over 3% raise increase, but you won't strike over teaching a 7th grader how to self-pleasure themselves? So it's, it's really hard to keep, you know, and it just started, but the more you find out, and the harder it is to accept that this is the way that it's going to be. That's why, like Jeremiah said, that he started the OSBCC, and hopefully, what that grows into is a bigger group like the Ohio School Board Association. When you win, you automatically, you know, your school district becomes part of that. So you're paying money to them, and they're advocating for everything that you don't believe in. So you're paying to do opposite of what you want done. So we're hoping that, you know, this is just the start of it, that something like the OSBCC can be something where we can use money to lobby against the things that the OSBA is lobbying for, because this is... I still don't know, I don't know how I'm going to finish the rest of my time, because you guys took everything that I was going to say. But, oh, and, yeah.
We can save time for questions, if you'd like.
I could. I was going to, I was going to mention one other, one other quick thing, because you said how, you and the keynote said that how they keep changing what SEL is. And they, because when I first was looking at it, you know, if you Google what is SEL, you get a pretty, pretty nice sounding. It sounds great. It's like, who doesn't want this for their kid? And then, you know, they were talking about some of the definitions. Well, they changed it again, and I don't remember exactly when this is, but this is around the transformative SEL. And it says that the concept of, I'm sorry, hold on. I can't read with my glasses on. "The concept of transformative SEL is a means to better articulate the potential of SEL to mitigate the educational, social, and economic inequities that derive from the interrelated legacies of racialized cultural oppression of the United States and globally." They go on to say that it's "to address issues such as power, privilege, prejudice, discrimination, and social justice." Yeah, I know. And so when I saw that, I went in luck, because that's from Castle. I went to go look and see who we have. I'm trying to get my phone. And we have Second Step, which is one of the ones that she showed us. And what Second Step says, oh, this is not cooperating, says, "We're committed to addressing racial injustice and helping you derive real change in your school communities. These resources will help you implement social, emotional learning in a way that builds on students' cultural assets, critically examines systems of power, and develops better ways of teaching, learning, and being. Engaging in this form of SEL is challenging. It pushes us to question longstanding beliefs, assumptions, and policies, but is necessary to move toward a more just and equitable future." Again, what is the benign, innocent explanation for any of this? There isn't one. You're never going to get an answer to that question. But keep doing what you're doing, keep coming to these things, and, you know, support the people that are fighting for your kids, because we can't just keep, we can't say, I'm going to homeschool my kid, because that's a small portion of it. The rest of these kids are going to be running the country in one day. We, you know, we did that with college, and now all colleges are like that. Hey, real quick, we did that with Catholic schools. I'll just send my kid to a Catholic school. My kid's Catholic school, and when the shooting in Parkland, Florida, they took all the kids out of class and had an assembly. And I was thinking, well, you're Catholic school, you're going into church to pray. No, they went to the gym to talk about, talk to your parents about why you need gun reform and get the guns out of there. This is at a Catholic school. No, 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 you should be in the church praying for the victims. You shouldn't be telling these kids to come home and tell us that we got to give up our guns. So I'll pass it on and just tell you, this, it's not just in public schools, it's everywhere, and it needs to be stopped.
Thank you, Mark.
Are you going to stand?
Diana, welcome. Would you like the podium? You're welcome.
Obviously, I need new eyeglasses. There's no way I could see this paper from my lap. It's good to see all of you. I know you, and you're all in the same room at the same time. This is wonderful. We should do this more often, don't you think? Well, we've had 12 savvy speakers all speaking on the same topic, which leaves the last speaker absolutely stumped to know what to say about the subject at hand, but I'm going to sally forth. I suppose that many of you are familiar with the origin of five-year plans. The first one was developed by the Soviet Union under Stalin, and he saw education as a weapon. Ohio has a five-year plan. It's the Strategic Education Plan. It was launched by the Department of Education in 2017 and adopted by the State Board of Education in 2019. And in my defense, that was before I was elected to this term. It's on the agenda to be revisited. Please tune in. We're going to, it's an opportunity, but you know, they've been working on the revision... One of the principles of the plan is that education/child rearing is a shared responsibility among behavioral experts, businesses, community members, educators, healthcare providers, higher ed, libraries, philanthropic groups, and social services, among others. Within the plan, there are 10 goals, and number 7 lays out SEL. In summary, the state and others are committed to working together to provide services. You have to think of SEL as the service arm of what our problem is. And then the service is to meet the state-defined needs of the whole child, including their ever-changing social, emotional, behavioral, mental, physical, and sexual needs. The plan is expanded in a document called "Ohio's Whole Child Framework." And when fully implemented, it is my understanding that our schools will become orphanages. The Whole Child Plan started during World War II at the hand of a Hungarian pediatrician who obviously had a merciful heart, and he wanted to care for abandoned children. Our children have not been abandoned. His purpose in doing that was he wanted these abandoned children to bond with their caregivers. We are their caregivers, so that's not the agenda here. It's just simply not. In their estimation, we are not caregivers. The teachers are the caregivers of today. Whole child, if you looked up Whole Child China, they have the same system that we have. Whole Child Mexico, Canada, about any other international, that's not international, you know what I'm trying to say. Move on, Diana. A relatively unknown current example of SEL in schools is now by law, the universal screening of children for dyslexia. Reading problems can sometimes produce social or emotional problems due to shame or frustration. Most people incorrectly regard dyslexia as a reading problem, but it is a neurological abnormality, and therefore it is a health issue. And that explains in part why the enabling legislation started out in the Senate Health Committee, but ended up in the House Education Committee before being signed into law by the governor. In committee and on the floor, very few legislators voted no. Even though dyslexia is a health issue that cannot be diagnosed by screening, all K-3 students are in the first wave of universal screening for dyslexia. All the students are in Tier 1. All students are already in Tier 1. In a few short years, by law, nearly every student will have been screened to pinpoint a relatively small segment of the student population that has a very specific neurological defect. Of course, that makes no sense, does it? So it's reasonable to ask why. The answer is to advance school-based healthcare centers and the tracking that goes along with them. Because dyslexia is a health problem, the informed consent of parents should be obtained. But based on the most current version of the Dyslexia Guidebook, that is before the State Board of Education, lame notification is all that parents have been receiving. Children who fail the screening will be referred to healthcare providers, and they could presumably become a part of clinical trials, and even subject to receiving MRIs if the parents have signed an informed consent form, an informed, they can't say informed consent form, but you have to. It has to be a consent form that is signed by an informed individual. The forms are usually associated with the school-based healthcare centers, not particularly the school, but they are in a contractual agreement, and contracts supersede state law. Therefore, parents should revisit any school consent forms that they have signed, including those related to sports, to ensure that you haven't unknowingly given consent to more than you intended, perhaps to boosters even. The Governor's Office of Health Transformation has a consent form template for districts to use. The one I'm referring to states that the signee, the parent or caregiver, is granting their permission for their child to receive any and all healthcare services as deemed necessary by school staff, a healthcare program, or a provider agencies, including those who are providing their services via telehealth. And for good measure, if your school is a school-based healthcare center, read the contract and any addendums to it. The document also says that children can access reproductive healthcare at any age, and receive drug and alcohol services, and mental health counseling from age 13 without parental consent. Children can also consent to being referred to other physicians, healthcare professionals, hospitals, clinics, or healthcare agencies as deemed necessary by a school, a program, or by staff. When a child consents to his own care, all of the information is kept confidential except for suicidal behavior intent to seriously harm another person, or if there's suspicion of neglect or abuse. Here's an example in Ohio, and Jessica, I think it was Jessica that talked about this. I've talked to two mothers now, that both their daughters were becoming young women, and they were uncomfortable with the changes. And evidently, school nurses are now prompted to ask, "How's it going, honey?" And then when there's a negative comment, then they go off to the counselor, the door comes down, and there you go. And both of the girls have ended up here in Ohio with double mastectomies and on male hormones. And that parents have the choice of sign the form for the surgery, or you're abusing your child, and we'll take your child away from you. We are very far down the pikes. Now, the good news is that parent, if parents choose not to enroll their child in a school-based healthcare center, and those are federally funded, so it's all paid for with your tax dollars, the child will still have access to the services of a school nurse. The bottom line is here, be the parent. Be the parent, because someone else wants to be the parent of your children. Be the parent and train up your child is the way that they should go. With that said, let's look further down the road in another direction. How many of you are familiar with the Backpack Bill? Okay. And the ACE, that's the After-School Care Enrichment Program. It's kind of the stepsister of the Backpack Bill. Think about it that way. Let's see. I wish the government didn't care so much. After signing up for this ACE, the After-School Care Enrichment Program, parents can be reimbursed up to $500 for some state-approved products or services. Surely, they will be consistent with things that we would be surprised to find out that they're offered. At the core, ACE, under the guise of reimbursing parents for piano lessons, and probably those lessons won't even qualify to be covered anyway, the state is creating a digital credentialing system that links a person's lifetime achievements, including education, health, and their employment records, beginning in early childhood throughout their lifespan. The shorter way to say that is, is that it's the next rendition of the US and probably international cradle-to-the-grave tracking system. And you can buy into it for only $500. Or you can get more money if you go with the Backpack Bill. Your choice. The question parents need to answer is, is that $500 reimbursement worth the true cost? The current intended target for the ACE is the Home Education Advisicky Groups, all Ohio schools and districts, education service centers, scholarship providers, and community-based enrichment and support programs. Nothing is free. And again, I regard the ACE program as the little sister, or perhaps the prototype, of the Backpack Bill, having read that bill quite thoroughly. Originally, when the people were getting all excited about the Backpack Bill, it was a 15-line statement. It has since been replaced, a 158-page bill or something, which most people might not catch the nuances of what's really going on here. What I told you about ACE is because I read the actual contract that has been signed. So, I thank you for your time and your attention. I assume that you would like to have some links to this information. I'll send it to John and Diane, and I'm sure that they will get to you, because they have the means to do that. And thank you, Jack, for having me and all of these wonderful people here today. And I wish you well, and happy birthday at your house.
Thank you very much. So we do have a couple of questions. "Ohio charter schools now include an increasing number of Hillsdale's Barney Schools, which are based on Hillsdale College's classical curriculum." One of the men bringing a school to the Columbus area said this curriculum is available for free to your public district schools. So, questions. First, were any of you aware of this? And, second, do you have any recommendations for how to implement this?
I can answer. I am aware of that. There's, I think, maybe three different levels that Hillsdale, through the Barney Charter School Initiative, offers. The highest level of affiliation is to become a Barney Charter School Initiative, you know, BCSI school, and they will approve that. And then, and I think they, for all cases, they'll provide training for teachers. But perhaps somebody else wants to add on. I don't know if you have information about that. There's one currently running Barney Charter School in Ohio, and that's in Toledo, NOCA, the Northwest Ohio Classical Academy. And then there are two more schools forming in Columbus, one in Cincinnati, and one in Northeast Ohio, and a second one in Toledo. So there's five more hopefuls coming online.
If you wanted that in your schools, that kind of curriculum in your schools, you need to get a majority on the board. And if you get a majority on the board, and your superintendent still won't do it, then fire your superintendent, because it's the only way you're going to do it.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, this question comes from Ken, and I hope I read this in its entirety the correct way. LGBTQ question. Then it reads, "All are secular preferences except T. Transgender denies biology. I certainly do not agree with most of her politics, but Kara Dembski's book, The Absolution of Sex: The War on Women and Girls..." So this is the buildup and the reference to the question. "Have you heard of this book, and if so, what is your view?" Yes, for anybody.
I have heard of the book. I have not read it yet. I have a stack of books that people have given me, or I purchased on this issue. But, yeah, this is absolutely an attack on women and the rights of women, just because someone believes, feels, has a strong belief that they are actually born in the wrong body, and they want to identify with the, you know, the opposite sex. They do have that right to dress that way, they have the right to, you know, they can be attracted to someone of the same sex. What they don't have a right to do is infringe on the privacy rights of someone else. So if they're making an accommodation that's going to violate the rights of other individuals, that's where you have to draw the line. So this is very much, we have a constitutional right to privacy, despite what federal guidance and opinion and dear colleague letters might say. We all have a constitutionally protected right to privacy. And whether someone has a, you know, a woman's right to privacy doesn't cease to, it doesn't end and it doesn't begin because someone else believes that they, you know, identify differently than their biological sex, and vice versa. A man's right to privacy doesn't change because someone else believes that they, you know, yeah, I hope I'm saying that correctly. So, I don't know if that really answered the question, but yes, I've heard of the book, I'd love to read it. I need to learn all I can.
Thank you for sharing that, Jessica. I think it's a really interesting and important nuance to hit, which is the privacy of other folks and the right that they have to that. I'm going to ask Jeremiah just a quick question. This actually came to us during the first panel, but the question was, are there any anti-social-emotional learning groups working with homeschooling groups in private schools? Because of your association, the Ohio School Board Constitutional Coalition, is that a place where someone that has a private school or, you know, homeschooling could go and maybe get resources?
We haven't really focused on that. I mean, what we've focused on is sharing best practices for public schools, to make public schools better and take them back.
Okay. Diana, did you have?
I can't have a direct answer to your question, but this is a great spot to clarify something. In Ohio, we have something called home instruction. And that is a service provided by the school, where a teacher goes to the child's home to give some tutoring, because that child is so fragile, physically, mentally, emotionally fragile in some way, they simply cannot attend a conventional school. We have another category called home education. It's a part of the Ohio Administrative Code, and people that are home educating their children, those children are excused from the compulsory attendance law. And we have another category called homeschooling, became very prevalent during COVID, where students were taking, getting the laptop, if you will, taking it home, using the state curriculum, state test. And in that case, that homeschooling was just a change of location. So the terminology matters, and the state would have us misuse the terminology.
One more question, and anyone can answer it, not all of you have to, and then one other comment, and then I know we need to wrap. "Does SEL seek to replace a child's conscience with emotional interpretation of reality? And if so, what is the long-term effect?"
I believe so. I mean, perception is reality, so if you can change the perception of the child, you can change their reality. And that's, the long-term effect, we have history books that'll show us what can happen when you do that, so it's not really far-fetched to see what will happen.
Anyone else want to weigh in?
Yeah. The question had conscience, con-science spelling, whatever, but conscious, consciousness is the Marxist term. So, the aim of, as I was describing, was to raise everybody's consciousness related to race or so on. And classical Marxism, which actually the critical race theorists call it vulgar Marxism, but classical Marxism dealt with people's economic situation. So there were the oppressors and oppressed, you had the bourgeois and the proletariat. Essentially, the title of James Lindsay's recent book, Race Marxism, which I would highly recommend, race is now replacing class as the sorting mechanism. So, I would say, you know, that hands down, SEL aims to raise consciousness related to people's positionality or identity. Because what happened was, the reason communism and reason classical Marxism didn't work, even though they killed how many millions in China and Russia and... in China and Russia and so on, is because capitalism, a lower economic person, the working class, that they wanted to get excited about revolting against the bourgeois, they actually succeeded in the capital, and they couldn't foment enough anger, so they're using these other categories of being oppressed to get people excited about revolting against the oppressors, in this case, the whites, and everything, everybody, even blacks who are white-adjacent and all that sort of thing, but...
The concept of the patriarchy, essentially.
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Comment, and then I know Dan wants to wrap up. Call your rep, this reads, "House Rep Chris Jordan is sponsoring a CRT, an anti-CRT SCL piece of legislation, so show support and tell your House rep and state senator you want to see it pass in Ohio." And then the other instruction is, "Call Dewine, tell him to sign anti-SCL CRT legislation that you support."